All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, December 13, 2023, to order. So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. This time we'll have a moment of silence for whatever seasonal thing you would like to think about. Pray for peace. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Gripp in leading us all on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Mr. Crupp, if you please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, everyone, again, welcome. As we begin the meeting of the city council, again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you'd just please put your phone on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. We understand pictures will be, you know, used shortly. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any individual staff or council member. We'll be respectful of you, please be respectful of us. And as we have been very good lately, please allow everybody to speak so that we can hear everyone. So please, anyone in the audience, don't disrupt. And this is your warning to please allow everybody to be heard. Thank you. Well, an Alderman, please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for November 21st. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Merritt, any update tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Will an Alderman please move approval of the committee of the whole for December 6, 2023? Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two appointments, I'll read both and ask for a motion to approve. Historic Preservation Committee Commission Eric Bierman is a new appointment, and Planning and Zoning Commission Erin Dunlap is a new appointment. Is there a motion to approve both?
So moved.
Motion in second to approve both? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And we have one wonderful presentation to end the city council new year today. We're swearing in four wonderful folks that are going to be participating with our fire department. That's a wonderful thing. So I'll join the chief at the podium, be happy to help swear these young men in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. Good evening, Mayor Mattson of the city council. Tonight is a special night for the Davenport Fire Department and the city of Davenport. This is an opportunity for me to introduce our four newest firefighters to the city council and our community. This is a celebratory moment for these young men. They will make a formal commitment to protect and serve our city. Mayor Mattson will officially swear them into their new positions, and they will officially be welcomed into the Davenport Fire Department family. But more important is the fact that they can share this moment with their own families. For these men are sons, husbands, and fathers to the people who have supported them throughout this process. And both of their families, the Davenport Fire Department and the ones they return to every day after a shift, will continue to support them throughout their careers. These four firefighters started with the city of Davenport in July. They have attended an eight-week in-house training program, and they have achieved various state certifications and gained the experience needed to be assigned to a 24-hour shift. And tonight is an opportunity for their families to celebrate and share in their accomplishments. Now is my privilege to present our newest Davenport firefighters. I would like to call up Ryan Amadon. And if Ryan's wife would like to come up, please. Ryan Amadon grew up in Mount Pulaski, Illinois. After high school, he attended college at Augustana in Rock Island, where he received a bachelor's degree in biology and a minor in psychology. He obtained his EMT Basic Certification and began working with medic EMS. Since then, he has obtained his paramedic certification. He also has his firefighter one hazmat tech and is working on his firefighter two certification. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his wife and his child, and his wife, Marissa, will be pinning his badge on tonight. Mayor Mattson?
I state your name.
I, Ryan Amadon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of.
I'm sorry, county, county of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
For firefighters.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next, I'd like to call up Wesley Foster. Wesley Foster was born and raised in Rock Island, Illinois. After graduating from high school, he joined the U.S. Navy. After spending four years overseas abroad, he attended college at Mount Vernon, Washington, to pursue a degree in fire protection technology and earned his EMT Basic. Wesley moved back to the Quad Cities and has volunteered with Bettendorf and Eldridge Fire Departments. When Wes is not at work, he's spending time with his family and his dog, and his wife, pinning him tonight, will be Aleisha.
I state your name.
I, Wesley Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Next, I'd like to call up Chris Plussel. Chris Plussel grew up in New Liberty, Iowa. He graduated from the Bennett Community Schools. He has worked as a landscape contractor for the past 25 years and now is pursuing his longtime dream of firefighting. He has six daughters and one granddaughter. He enjoys spending free time with his family and seeking new adventures. His wife of 30 years, Jill, will be pinning his badge on tonight.
I state your name.
I, Chris Plussel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
For the city of Davenport.
The city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
And now is hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
And lastly, I'd like to call up Anthony Mer. Anthony Mer was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. After high school, he attended Scott Community College, where he obtained his EMT Certification. Anthony has been an EMT for four years and is finishing up his paramedic program at Trinity Schools. He enjoys spending time with his family, and he's the third oldest of five brothers and one sister. His mother, Kim, will be pinning his badge on this evening.
I state your name.
I, Anthony Merr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Thank you. Get a picture with Mayor. Thank you, congratulations. Again, I would like to thank Mayor Mattson of the city council for this opportunity. If it wasn't for your continued support for the fire department, we wouldn't have the opportunity to bring these young men in front of you. We appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll pause a second. If the folks and families want to stay for the council meeting, they're welcome. Otherwise, we'll wish you the best. We'll just pause a moment. Okay, very good. All right, next is petition communications, and I'll go first. We just have a, as tradition here in Davenport, for any council folks that are on their last council meeting and are leaving, we, the staff puts together a little framed picture token of appreciation for the service to Davenport. So for the couple that are here, I'll hand them to those, and then the people that are not, we'll make sure we get them. So just bear with me.
First, Alderman Condon. Just a token of the city's appreciation for your service to Davenport. Thank you.
So thank you for your service. Yes, thank you for your service. All right, any others? I see Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. So since tonight is my last meeting, my kids are here. I'm sure the highlight for them will be seeing all the firemen, though. One of the biggest achievements that I had on city council was we made city council stickers so I could compete in the eyes of my kids, but as it turned out, nobody wanted them. So the firefighters are a big deal for those guys. So I hope you indulge me for just a minute. After six years, my time in the council is coming to an end. And if I may take the privilege, I'd like to offer some thanks. In so many ways, I cannot believe that it's already been six years. But for your perspective and for my own, when I announced my candidacy, we had one son, his name's Benjamin, and one on the way. We brought George home from the hospital just before Election Day, and I had the proud moment as a father of announcing the births from the dais of Mary Margaret Norman and Emily Elizabeth. So time flies in more ways than one. Thank you for my kids for always treating city work with a special reverence and not just because it meant receiving some extra attention whenever we were near the police or firemen. Some of the kids still don't want me to quit, but I'm, which is amazing, but I'm looking forward to spending more time together celebrating life in the city as we do. My family and I, we actually live downtown. We live just right across the street. There's a shoe repair store right across the street as well. And one day, they had this large metal shoe rack out front that they were getting rid of. It was maybe six feet tall by seven feet wide. And that night, shortly before the council meeting started, the mayor caught me inside his office staring out the window, and he said, "What is that woman doing?" And without looking up, I proudly said, "That's my wife." I told her to grab that thing before somebody else gets it. So there's supporting your spouse, and then there's working a full-time job, raising five kids downtown, watching your husband walk across the street to another city meeting night after night, and still loving him enough to drag a 45-pound shoe rack 200 yards across a parking lot because your husband likes free stuff. So thank you for all that you do for me and all that you do for the kids. And in my official capacity as Alderman at large, I'd like to thank you for what you do for the city. Other than Alderwoman McGinnis, I don't think anyone else can claim to have done more to positively impact our U.S. Census count. As Aldermen, we're all lips and no hips. So I'll mention that my wife always thought it was impressive that if you commemorate something or build something, that you get your name on a little plaque. And I'd like to thank Alderman Dunn. The only thing I ever got my name on, he buried eight feet deep into Vandevere Park. It's a time capsule, maybe my kids will be around to see it. However, thanks to one very long city meeting, city council meeting, I do believe I am the first and probably the only councilman to use his own restroom in the middle of a meeting. And I'll be erecting a plaque at my own home to signify that feat. So when I was elected Alderman, my chief qualification was probably that I loved Davenport and that I could see City Hall from my house. I did have a lot of big ideas and opinions, but the job was not initially what I thought it would be, and I worried constantly that I didn't have the right skill set. I'd like to thank all my council colleagues, both former and current, that reassured me, taught me, and let me talk through all the issues. Over time, I came to appreciate that we all have different skill sets. But the most important thing you can do is bring to the job is your own unique life experiences and a self-awareness to appreciate that everyone else's experiences are different from your own. And so we are really a different mix of people. We don't make the easiest friends because we are all so different, but I can't overstate how fond I am of all of you. And if you love Davenport enough to run for city council, you're from my own heart. So I'll miss my time with you guys and everything that we did together. To staff who offers all the professional expertise, I thank you for putting us in a position to say yes so many times by bringing us smart policy, effective plans, balanced budgets, and facilitating robust public input processes. I'm very fond of all of you guys as well. I learned a lot from you, and I've never had a real job. And it was really interesting to sit in the room with so many smart people and watching you run your professional organization. There's less stressful lines of work, but while it might be a calling for us and a career for you guys, I see you guys wearing your heart on your sleeve. And quickly, on a personal sentiment, when we had a tragedy this summer, yeah, I saw you guys. I saw what little bit that you guys allowed to show through. It was a lot for you, and looking back, it was a lot for us. So thank you for, I think you guys did a great job, and you deserve to know that. And the community deserves to know that. And finally, thank you to the citizens of Davenport. It has been my greatest honor and honestly, a lot of fun. We had a marketing firm come to Davenport a year or so ago, and they tried to take stock of what it was like to live in Davenport so that they could offer us their expertise. And as they brought back adjectives to describe our city, they did come up with a common word that I hear now and then when we try to describe this wonderful river town that we live in. And stubborn or a chip on the shoulder would sometimes come up. And the thing of it is, is I'm not technically from Davenport. I've been living here longer than anywhere else, but what you learn is if you love this city, it will love you back. And stubbornness or a chip on your shoulder starts to look a lot like steadfast resilience, loyalty, hardworking, earnest, fair, loving, and I could go on. So if I may, the phrase "come hell or high water" was put in print for the very first time in a river town just a few miles south of us. And so it's sort of from this region. But I think it perfectly suits this community that has faced floods and numerous other hardships because "come hell or high water," I still do believe in Davenport. We can both hold ourselves to account and continue to outperform any doubters' expectations. If everyone continues to love this city, we're gonna be just fine. So thank you for this wonderful experience that I had and for the honor of being able to represent U.S. citizens.
Thank you, Alderman Condon.
If I could make a brief statement when it's time?
I'm sorry, who was that?
This is Judith, if I could make a brief statement?
Alderwoman Lee, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this has been a great honor. I have always tried to do my homework and make informed and hopefully wise decisions for the betterment of my constituents and for the city. I think it's most important that I really tried to carefully and deeply listen to people and hear not only what they were saying, but hear what they were trying to say but didn't know how perhaps, or the underlying issue of what they tried to say. And that's where I've learned the most. I just wanted to say my greatest joy as four years as an Alderwoman was working with staff and council to serve my constituents in the Eighth Ward and all the city constituents. That was really what I tried to do as an Alderwoman. And I greatly appreciate the assistance and help and the ability to learn and grow from this experience. I look forward to continuing to work with folks and be involved in the city. And again, I want to thank everybody for your support, your kindness, and all your involvement. Thank you so much, everyone. That's all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was pleased to receive the email, I think it was about 4:00 PM or so, from Public Works Department that East 53rd Street is open for five lanes of traffic and barricades are removed. So it's been a long, long process. Had a good discussion with some staff and Alderman Dunn yesterday. So is pleased to see. And then to my four colleagues that are spending their last meeting on the city council, I wish you all well. Two in particular, I just have some specific comments to Alderman Condon. Again, I apologize, I did not get out and get the gift for you that I intended. I would like to say that it was because I was wanting to avoid any gift laws or something of that nature, but I was just lazy. And it was going to be a walker and a pack of gum because I think you were the one that got us on a meeting realizing that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And so I appreciate all of our conversations, being able to work with you. It was pretty cool to see your family grow in person here and look forward to any other interactions we have in the future. To Alderwoman Lee, you know, I thank you for all your time and the work we had together as well. You helped provoke a lot of thought in me through the questions that you would ask. We came onto this council at the same time. We had a meeting with Alderman-elect Dorman, I remember that, at Coffee Revolution, the three of us, all sitting there looking in wild wonder at each other, like, what did we just do? From that point, I realized you're someone that had a good sense for what to do. Again, asked a lot of great questions. I had a lot of enjoyment being able to work with you. I wish you well in the future. And again, I know I will see you around and look forward to any interactions and enjoy your time in Tennessee and tell Bob what's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I don't know, I've been thinking long and hard. I had a speech wrote, and I was like, oh, God, my momma's gonna be there. But guess what? Here we go. Love you, girl. I want to say thank you for the time I've been on this council as well. I've learned a lot. And I want to say thank you to a couple of folks that are going out. So Condon, I want to thank you as well. But I guess I should be more like the Martin Luther King of the modern day. I know I've been more like Malcolm X, and I don't know how to curve that, you know? Because I love this city. I moved to San Diego, California. I've lived in Dallas, Texas, and look where I'm at. I'm back in Davenport, Iowa, in my childhood home that next summer, the Kellys will have home for 50 years in a neighborhood that I fight for every single day. So I love my neighborhood, I love my city. I hate that I'm as passionate as I am, but it is what it is, you know? Quiet as is kept. My mom is a freedom fighter, and she ain't gonna tell you, but I just do it differently. I get out there and I shake cages, and that's just how I get down. So, and I love the relationships that I have now with the employees that are really trying to help me flourish because, you know, it was a hard feat because I was nervous, and Rick Dunn was the only person that told me, "Tim, you're doing a good job. Nobody's gonna run against you." And everybody that decided to run against me, they all backed out and called me and got on board with me. So what does that tell you? You know what I'm saying? So I love this city. I love, love, love Davenport. But Davenport hasn't been that kind to me, and I still love this city. So what does that tell you? You know what I'm saying? If I'm willing to get up every day and fight for a city that could really, the worst I'm gonna say tonight, probably don't give a damn about me, but you know, I still get up and do what I need to do because I love this city. And to my haters, hi, haters, I see you. You see me. The best thing to do is just have a conversation with me. Because I, I mean, I am what I am, Popeye. But I'm just saying, if you need help, I'm here to help regardless of party, creed, color, because that's what I signed on for. I signed on to help people. I signed on to help people. The Kelly family is a glutton of punishment. I can't believe I am a public figure, because I sat in the audience just like the 324 Maine folks, and I sat there every day wondering why the city of Davenport was trying to get rid of civil rights. That's how I got started. So, when I tell you, for all you people that are sitting in the audience wondering what's going on, don't worry about these two ways and one ways, don't worry about 53rd, don't worry about all these brand new buildings. If there's some questions that you need to ask, ask, because we're supposed to answer these questions for you. Right now, I'm a little silent. Y'all know why, but that's okay. But I'm telling you, ask questions, keep showing up, make a difference for your city, because we should all be kumbayaing. Not half of us, the whole room should be kumbayaing. And for those that are looking at their pads and looking at the floor, mm, I'm talking to you. So, I'm just saying, all of us should be kumbayaing together. This shouldn't be a city of the haves, because the have-nots, we live here too, and I want y'all to know, I'm a have-not, but I'll keep fighting for y'all, because I love this city. And thanks to my mother, who instilled in me to get up and fight. So, don't clap for me this evening, please clap for Vera Kelly, because I'm telling you, there's been some days that it's been hard for me to even walk in this building, but I get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take the opportunity to thank a few of our colleagues that are moving on from the council. Judith, thank you for your willingness to serve. Anybody who raises their hand to be an elected official knows that it's an act of community service, and there are challenges and sacrifices, and I appreciate you raising your hand and serving. And same thing to Robbie. I know it's a short time for you with just the one term, but I think the thing that I saw in you most is that you really put your head down and worked hard. I don't think in two years I received an email from a Fourth Ward resident saying I couldn't get ahold of my ward alderman, will you help me? And that's because you were very responsive, and that is a trademark of a good ward alderman. So, thank you for doing that. Maria, you and I started together eight years ago. We were much younger than we are right now, we were new to politics, and we were young enough that our children were toddlers, and our first meeting was a playdate where our kids bounced around the inflatable park while we talked about city politics. And when I think about our time serving together, probably the memory that sticks out the most is the year that we spent on the Public Safety Committee as the chair and vice chair. And the things that I really remember you as being a great advocate for were restorative justice and mental health and juvenile crime prevention, and you made an impact on all of those things that were important to you. So, I wish you and your family the best, and thank you for eight years of service. And then, JJ, you develop a different relationship with your alderman-at-large counterpart, because there's a lot of logistical things that you have to go through and balance your schedule, and also, when the relationship begins, you are opponents. So, when I first met JJ, he was my political opponent, and then he won election and he became my colleague, and over the years, he's become a trusted colleague, and now, I'm proud to call you a friend. And you and I are very different people, and I think that is what has helped us work so well together. You're creative and thoughtful, you want people to work together and find common ground, you seek compromise and try to bring opposing views to the table, and you've got this crazy ideal that if you could just get everybody together in a room, that you could get them to agree on almost anything. And while that doesn't always work out, I appreciate that idealism that you have. You've been a great advocate for the downtown, for the riverfront, and you really were instrumental in forming our strategy for the dream programs. We leaned on you a lot for input on that. You believe in Davenport, and you've consistently asked us to dream bigger and be better. So, it's been great to, it's been great being your counterpart as an alderman-at-large, it's been great getting to know you and your family and serving with you. I wish you guys the best, and thank you for serving, but also, you know, rest assured that you made Davenport a better place over the last six years. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else?
All right, very good. We'll move to individual items on the discussion agenda. The first is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule VII, No Parking of Chapter 10.96, titled Schedules Municipal Code of Davenport by adding West 47th Street along the north side from Pine Street west to the dead end. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman please move third consideration?
No move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I'm opposed to the ordinance as written, you know, to have no parking from Pine all the way to the dead end. I will make a motion for an amendment, but I will sit back and wait for any other comments before I make that motion.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. I'll come back. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there someone from Public Works that can perhaps talk about, a little, share with everyone sort of how this came about in the communication? We had some people here last week, and again, this had gone through process, and then all of a sudden, it, there was an issue. So, the process, how this is communicated to neighbors, conversations that had been had, if you could share a little bit of that, because I think that was all kind of a surprise to everyone last week.
Sure. Nicole Gleason, Public Works. So, basically, our general process is it comes to us via the neighborhood, so there's generally not a lot of opposition. This one did come as a concern for public safety vehicle access, particularly fire trucks. Our traffic engineer did not disagree, therefore, we put it on as proposed by the requester. When we heard the opposition last week, we took a second look at it, and we feel by putting the no parking just there on both sides at the entrance, it would accomplish the same goal. We could monitor it, and if the concern came again, we could relook at it at that time, and then this would potentially be a process improvement opportunity if the no parking gets contentious. But since I've been here, this has really been the first one that's been challenged. So, yep.
Okay, anyone else before I go back to Alderman Jobchin? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I would like to make a motion to amend this consideration with the language by adding West 47th Street along the north side from Pine Street to 230 feet west, and along the south side from Pine Street to 200 feet west.
Second.
Kate, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, Brian, please call the roll on the amendment.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ann Condon?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The amendment is added. Now, we're on the original with the amendment. Any other discussion? Brian, please call the roll on third consideration with the amendment.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ann Lynch?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That ordinance passes. The next item is a resolution awarding a contract for the traffic signalization, Third and Fourth Street two-way conversion project to Davenport Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $2,895,075.50. Is there any public with comment? Please remember our rules.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, Iowa, and I'm 100% opposed to this. In all seriousness, the very least that the city council could do is postpone it until the new alderpeople are seated and have a couple of sessions to look at it and consider what direction. That's almost one-third of the votes, and there's a lot of people in the city who think that this is just an extraordinary waste of money. The amount of money is almost exactly as much as is going to the city administrator who's leaving if that's approved, which I hope it's not, but this is just-
Stay on topic.
This is an extraordinary waste of money, and the very least that the city council could do with people who are departing, I know people come, people go, but there's going to be three new people on the city council, which is almost a third of the votes, and the hundreds of millions of dollars, tens, tens or hundreds of millions of dollars in penalties that are coming up for the city, really demand that the city should be adjusting its expenditures down. And this is a waste of money, and as someone who drives regularly, I believe it will result in far more accidents, pedestrian injuries, bicycle injuries, more time for fire trucks to get to places, more time for the police department. I don't see any positives to this at all, and it's an extraordinary waste of money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
David Ezra, Recident in Third Ward. If you spend $3 million on streetlights on this two-way conversion project, you will be ignoring the wishes of your constituents. You know that. If this issue was brought up to a vote, the citizens of Davenport would overwhelmingly vote against this. You know that. The city, of course, is being sued for hundreds of millions of dollars. We need to tighten our belts. We need to prepare for the inevitable judgments against the city. Spending $3 million for traffic lights is a terrible waste of city resources.
Thank you. Anyone else?
LaShawna Dixon, Fifth Ward. I know last week it was brought up that the money would not, well, not only making the two lanes, but anyway it goes, that the traffic lights need to be done, but if you just need to do traffic lights, just do the traffic lights, but I don't think, in my honest opinion, we don't need to be spending the money anyway. And if a tra- What's wrong with the traffic lights downtown anyway? Let's be honest. What's wrong with them? So, for, and I agree with Ezra, if you had people actually vote on it, I believe that majority of Davenport would say no. So, I believe in any type of way that the budget needs to be cut, and then the additional cost that was added on later on needs to be questioned as well. So, I ask that you vote no.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Kyle Carter, Downtown Davenport Partnership and Fifth Board Resident. Honorable Councilman Mayor, first let me thank city staff for the crystal-clear memo laying out the consequence of tonight's budget vote on a project this council has previously agreed to build and directed staff to engineer over the past year. Love or hate this longstanding project, facts are inarguable. Rejecting this budget, tabling or redirecting staff at this stage will have an immediate domino effect and cost taxpayers more for infrastructure critically needed right now, in the west end especially, and downtown. Pushing road repaving from Telegraph to Harrison back over a year could likely cost even more than the current overdue loan. Decades-old traffic controllers downtown do not work properly today, revealing once and for all why the lights don't time correctly as they used to. Like a multitude of other capital improvements projects on tonight's agenda, the scope simply changed to address an immediate need, and it simply costs more to do it right. But here we are once again, singling out this project as the only item that somehow matters in keeping Davenport fiscally sound. There are $30 million of capital improvement projects on tonight's consent agenda alone. This road design was implemented in 1954. What other transportation infrastructure functions through its highest investees for the community without revision for a period of 70 years? To put that in perspective, that would mean believing what we are doing tonight would remain untouched until 2094. I don't even believe that. The heyday of the 1950s and '60s is long gone downtown, and most especially densely-packed apartment stores, offices, and traffic counts that justified installation of wide one-way systems in the first place, which made perfect sense for the time and did a fine job of serving this community. But this community has dramatically changed. Prioritizing needs of now neighborhood residents, small businesses, arts and entertainment should drive design more than simply traffic throughput for a bygone era. The public infrastructure project has received more public and council scrutiny over a decade and a half than frankly, far more important issues of the day. It's also a fact that traffic calming in downtown is a city project, brought forward by the city itself in 2008, 2009 by the Jeff Speck Downtown Master Plan, and paid for and subsequently reaffirmed as goal numerous times in 16 years of studies, master plans, and professional traffic engineering reports. The city's own 2010 Davenport Motion Plan clearly lays out the road configuration plus Brady and Harrison Street through the hilltop. It even hints at eliminating the neighborhood one-ways, needlessly cutting through much of the Fifth Ward and beyond. Downtown is not the only neighborhood that needs Davenport to be accountable for executing its own master plans. What's good for the goose is indeed good for the gander. This all culminates with tonight's project being voted into the five-year CIP budget in 2020, but was pushed back one last time again to align wisely to gain efficiencies with the west-end road resurfacing and two-way ordinance approved in 2022. DDP may have been this project's biggest advocate, but the locally-owned small businesses and property owners who are footing the $700,000 private contribution is simply doing so to encourage the public sector to finally finish what it began 16 years ago. We are hardly the Illuminati of corporate interests. I represent exclusively small businesses and locally-owned properties who have lived through this. Our interest is seeing Davenport be the best version of itself and never settle for good enough. I've been here for every single one of the public meetings in the whopping 16-year window we've debated this and kicked the can down the road, which now certainly totals over 100 meetings and plenty of money. Global nuclear treaties have been agreed on in less time. I was a fresh-page 26-year-old when we began this debate, and I'm a 42-year-old father who just wants his kid to have the brightest possible future in Davenport. I respectfully request that we finish what we started, move together as a community, whether we loved or hated this journey, and ensure we remember what we're all supposed to be here to do, make Davenport the best damn city it can possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, next.
Thank you so much, LaShawna Dixon, Fifth Ward, for the last time. I'm gonna miss Mr. Tim Kelly. But anyway, I don't see how a two-way, I know it doesn't matter what I say anyway, because you've already made your decision, but I don't see how a two-way is gonna make this Davenport the best city ever. I don't see how that's happening. And I always go back to, this is $3 million, just about where we are in trouble. Davenport is in trouble. We have all these lawsuits to get to, and we don't have this money. One of our lawsuits are $50 million. We only have probably 8 million left, probably even 7. We have to stop this spending. Yeah, it may be nice, but I get up and down those two ways just fine. Continue to make them, patch up them two ways like we have it until we get out of these lawsuits. Not we're not gonna get out. Let these people get their money. That's what I want. I want these people to get their justice, and I'm sorry, that's just the truth.
Stay on topic.
I understand all subjects. We don't have the money. We don't have the money. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
All right. Katie Stewart, Davenport. I don't know how roads make a city great. I thought it was the people. When you have affordable housing issues and roads being the talk, I'm sorry, that money needs to stay put. We're down here every single week. We drive these roads every single day. There's nothing wrong with these roads. There's other roads that need be dealt with before, traffic lights and everything else. When, put the money where it deserves to be at, and then that's with the people. Forget the money aspect. Davenport can be a great place with the people. It's like we're supposed to sing, like Tim Kelly says, kumbaya, everyone together, when it's like the people is what matters, and we're more worried about roads. And putting $3 million, which I believe was more than what it was supposed to be, into roads than in people, and that is where the problem lies. People make the city great, not roads, not buildings, but if we want to be that aspect of the buildings and all that are important, then why are we having buildings fall where it kills people and displaces them? So, 16 years to 15 and 16, this town has issues, and it's a big farther than a two-way road. There's more issues that Davenport has to worry about right now than a road that is just fine, because we drive it every single day, every single week. Y'all need to do the right thing. Well, no.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jane Duex, Fifth Ward.
Jane Duex, Fifth Ward, Davenport. I just did some quick math on the fellow who was talking about, well, he talked last week too, and I wanted to rebut it. You know, 20 years this has been bandied around and master plan. I've come to a lot of those master planning meetings and city meetings where you want public input and la-la-la, you know? And the most important things never seem to come forward. It always seems to be what somebody else's agenda is, including the one-ways. You know, North Park Mall, 10 years before he was born, is what killed the downtown small businesses. You know, the one-ways were here long before he was born, before many of you were born. You know, and I vividly remember the downtown area as thriving with Third and Fourth Street a one-way. And yeah, so the lights aren't timed. Yeah, I remember when we could go down Third Street or Fourth Street, and if you went like 24 miles an hour or 26 miles an hour, you hit every light. You know, and I go down Third and Fourth Street all the time, and I don't care that I have to stop, or I have to go 15 miles an hour instead of 24 miles an hour. You know, it's not that big a deal that they're not timed perfectly. And in fact, I think one of the master plan meetings that we had, that was kind of a problem because they didn't have to stop. And so, you know, somebody trying to cross the street, you know, could get hit because they didn't have to stop at every block. And that's another issue. I think that we need to make pedestrians first here. If you're going to make some changes, you know, make it so that cars have to stop for whoever's trying to cross the street. Pedestrians first. Many towns out east, you know, have that. And, you know, I had that situation recently where I waited to make my turn or whatever I was doing, you know, for the people that were trying to cross the street. And it goes back again to our senior citizens that live downtown without cars, in their little walkers, their little electric scooters, and their little canes, that a one-way on Third Street helps save their lives rather than making it into a two-way. Because they live right there at Edgewater, at Ripley and Third, and they live in some of these other apartment complexes down here. And, you know, 20 years, it got bandied around because the other city councils listened to the people. You're the first city council that so much haven't listened to the people about so many things. You know? Listen to the people. How many signatures were on Bruce Grocher's petition? I know it was hundreds of pages. You know? I know because I helped collect, you know, several pages. How many signatures were on that petition demanding that we keep the one-ways a one-way? Who knows? Does any city staff know, or any city council member? Did any city council member even look at his petition? Keep, you know, and like the others have said, buku bucks is owed. You know, I hope everybody read the Quad City Reader this week by Ed Fibbets, our esteemed former Quad City Times, you know, political reporter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, council members. I'm Candy Pasternak. I'm a Sixth Ward resident, a Third Ward business owner, and a proud member of the Downtown Davenport Partnership. I am very proud of our executive director and the work that he's put forward in supporting this plan, and more importantly, we are very proud of the council and the work that you've put in in weighing all the options and all the alternatives and coming to the decision to approve the plan of converting it from the one-ways to the two-ways. We believe that work that you've engaged in over the last several months and even years is warranted and warrants the passage of this resolution and moving forward with this plan. As our executive director mentioned, we want Davenport to be the best Davenport it can be, and our mission and our charge as the Downtown Partnership is to be good stewards of the schmid dollars that are part of our budget process, and we have committed those dollars to the contribution to this plan, which we are emphatically supportive of and believe will be in the best interests of the entire city of Davenport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Cannon, and I own Oh So Sweet, which is now Tiffany's in downtown Davenport. I've owned this business for nine and a half years now. I was at 314 Main, and now I'm at 210 East Second Street. So I just have a few thoughts to say. These repairs are necessary regardless of which way the traffic flows. The road resurfacing project could get exponentially more expensive if delayed another year. This project has already been litigated and approved. Voting this down would be fiscally irresponsible, and the street resurfacing project needs to move forward without further delay. So I'm just, you know, wishing that everybody would vote yes. It's been said, you know, that you need to listen to the citizens of Davenport, which of course is absolutely true, but you also need to listen to the people who have invested time, money downtown. I mean, I am responsible for about 40 employees, which it will affect, the resurfacing and the two-way will affect not only me but the people I employ as well, as well as my investment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Jared Cornet, Seventh Ward. I just want to remind everybody that the $700,000 that the downtown people are kicking into this fund is over 10 years. They're not going to give us $700,000 to pay against all the improvements that need to be made. They're going to give us $70,000 over the next 10 years. I think their voice is, should be depleted a little bit with that. I don't think they have, should have as much standing in saying about what goes on here. And nobody told anybody to open a business in downtown Davenport.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Deo Gilmore. I live in the Sixth Ward. This isn't about one-way, two-way. This is about this resolution. So let's not talk about one-way, two-way. We can talk about that some other time. Wow, I don't understand. For clarification purposes, I'm sure you all read this, these are the bids from the two bidders for the traffic signals. So for clarification purposes, I'll only refer to the two bidders as bidder A and bidder B. Both are local, highly-respected union contractors. I would have to believe that both bidders pay very close, if not the same wages, to their employees. Both companies should also have similar, if not identical, material costs. I'm certain all of you read the bid comparison available on the city website. That's where I downloaded it today. I'd like to take a minute or two to give you just three examples of what I found. So items number 15 to 22, traffic signal removal, seven intersections. That's direct labor. Bitter A, $102,780. Bitter B, $392,000. That's 381%, almost four times higher than bidder A. Number 25, conduit touchless or trenchless four-inch. One item, this material, 5,400 linear feet. Bitter A, $397,000. Bitter B, $1,009,098. That's 254,000 or 254%, two and a half times higher than bidder A. Construction survey, this would be indirect labor. Bitter A, $16,313. Bitter B, $81,250. That's 498% higher. That's almost five times higher than bidder A. The difference in bids for just these three items, bitter A, $516,371. So that's 516. Bitter B, $1,482,348. That's $965,977 difference. That's pushing $1 million real hard. It's my understanding that all bids are good for 60 days. These bids were opened on 11/14/2023, per the city's website. 60 days from then will be Saturday, January 13th. I would strongly suggest you table this action on this and send it out for rebid. If the rebids come out similar, then award it to the lowest bidder.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Austin Olson. I live in the Third Ward. I'm just a regular citizen, and I wanted to say that I think that we should go ahead and approve this. I think that, you know, converting the one-ways into two-ways is a really good idea for public safety. I mean, I know for my own self, just crossing the street sometimes to get to the bus stop so I can get to work, I think people are so zoned in on its one-way that they don't even look for pedestrians crossing the road. So I've been hit, almost hit several times. So anyway, just wanted to say, I'm a regular citizen. I don't have like a standing in anything, and I think that converting them into two-ways is a good idea. And I also would like to just respond briefly to the notion that nobody told anybody to open up a business in downtown Davenport. Well, if nobody opens up a business, then how is it going to continue to be a downtown? So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, okay. Will Alderman please move the resolution? Motion in a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Hearing, okay. Alderman done.
I will.
I'll get you guys. Alderman done.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess somebody has to be first. I, you know, this is, like Mr. Gilmore said, for me, this isn't about the one-ways to two-ways. We've had that discussion. But when I do see two contractors that come up with two different prices and they're so far apart, coming from the construction industry, you know, I worked 37 years in construction, and I've had a lot to do with a lot of bids, a lot of this looks, they're way, way, they're not percentages difference, they're huge percentages difference. So as a council member, you know, I'm concerned if we do take the lowest bidder, what are we going to get when it comes time for change orders? Because, you know, when these two contractors, they bid exactly the same thing, line item by line item, and, you know, it's a big difference, and that's a huge concern of mine. So I know, you know, we'll end up voting on it, how we vote on it, but normally when we have things that are this far out, we either send them back, we take a pause and have staff look at it and make sure, and then go back, maybe even go back to the contractor and say, hey, is this the correct price? Or did you make a mistake and you want to pull your bid, or we want to do something different? But I just have some concerns, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess some of the comments has provoked a question for me, so someone from staff, please, could you educate me? And not that I'm in favor of doing this. If bids are good for 60 days, yet we tabled this to go out for rebid, how would that work? I mean, because we only had two bids, correct? Okay, so with the nods of the head, would that, taking it out for rebid, would that maintain that those bids stay? I mean, could the contractors, could contractor A go, oh yeah, we really messed this up. Now we're another million over top of that, and we kind of negotiate against ourselves, if I make any sense there?
Yes, that would be the case. If we were to go into a rebid situation at the staff level, we would have to reject all bids and then completely close out that bid and reopen a new one.
Okay, so we can't keep those two, say we want some, we want some better ones, let's go find them, and, okay.
No, you start over completely.
So with that, thank you very much. I was one of the council members that spoke pretty vehemently against the conversion. And, you know, definitely was not in favor of it. However, you know, since we did have a pretty darn lengthy discussion, you know, I've gotten to the point where, you know, we need to see this process through. In my opinion, I think the best thing is to move forward, approve this, and just kind of be done with it.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Anyone else up top? Ms. Alderwoman Lee or Alderwoman Dickman?
I would like to say something, please.
Go ahead.
This is Judith Alderwoman Lee.
Alderwoman Lee, please.
Okay. This has been a lengthy process. It sounds to me like the bid process worked and that one of the bidders, and someone can tell me if I'm wrong, actually identified a really serious problem, which is the underground infrastructure being broken up and needing to be repaired for the electrical aspects, as well as the operating system being completely obsolete and unreplaceable that controls the lights. So that's a good thing, and that's how the system should work. I don't know if we can select something that isn't the low bid, but it sounds like if we're going to do this, then we should. And it's going to be very costly, and as I asked in one of my questions, the same thing has to happen where they're doing the rehab as well, and that would be seen as a different CIP project with different money. So what we're looking at now is $3 million just for the lights. And if we vote for the lights, then we're voting for the conversion. When this originally came up, I expressed serious concerns about safety, particularly at the intersection where the two-ways would meet the one-ways, particularly because we'd be using paint and a traffic light. And I still think that that is a dangerous situation, particularly on Third. If you remember, it was with this council, it was a 5-5 vote, and the mayor broke the tie, and there was a lot of opposition from folks in the community. And when I say the community, I mean the greater community along there, not just the downtown area. So my concern, again, nothing has changed to mitigate my concerns about safety, particularly at the terminal intersection. And one of the other questions I kept asking is, what is the evidence that there is a need for this? And I got two answers. One was, that's not the question that council asked us. They asked us to look at feasibility, and of course, it's feasible. And the other one is, I got a lot of anecdotes, but there's no evidence that this will make a difference for downtown businesses. So I originally voted no, and it was on safety and need, and I still have concerns, particularly because it was a 5-5 vote with the mayor breaking the tie at the time. So council was split. I know we've gone a long ways towards this, but I still have a lot of concerns, and I haven't quite decided how I'm going to vote, but I will shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just kind of want to briefly bring up some points here. You know, the first main point here is that the controllers in the conduit needs to be replaced regardless of whether the configuration of the street changes. And to be clear, the process we went through as a council was to change the ordinance. So we literally changed the law that says the streets are now two-ways, okay? And that is now what we're arguing about today. What we're arguing about today is, are we going to pay for the lights to be installed, right? So my experience over eight years is that when we have seen projects that come in a little bit more expensive, that if we rebid them, we rarely get a better price, and typically we end up getting a worse price, okay? That is true. Also, change orders are fairly uncommon for this type of project. The majority of our change orders come from road construction projects where the soil underneath the road was something that couldn't be foreseen and added additional cost. This isn't a project that we would typically see a change order for. And Deco is the lowest bidder. They have a history of working in our downtown. They also have a history of significantly being the lowest bidder on projects like this in the downtown, so there is some reason to believe that they understand what they're doing as a reputable company. And, you know, I also want to point out that we're being very particular about this one project, but we have routinely approved projects that were budget overruns. There is an example on our consent agenda tonight. Put on the consent agenda last week with only one comment from myself praising the project for being good. $2 million over budget, passed on consent agenda. The fire station, $3 million over budget, passed on the consent agenda. No comment from council. The Fairmount Community Center and Arpa Project, $1 million over budget. There was a comment from council on that, but passed almost unanimously. So this isn't uncommon. And again, by tabling it or by sending it out for rebid, you are not going to save money. We are probably going to end up costing more money. Um, we are probably going to end up costing more money. Um, if we bring this into the new, uh, council year, we are also, um, going to push the project out a year. And if you've driven down Third and Fourth Street, uh, west of Harrison, you can confirm that those roads need to be replaced. And we have been sitting on this, this road replacement project for over four years and it is time to get going, um, on those projects now that we have Fifty-third done, Third and Fourth Street need to get done as well. And, and lastly, um, th- there's no question, right? This was a five-to-five vote. It's been, it's been a divisive topic, right? I think what this council needs to do is put this issue to bed tonight and let the next council move on and start with a, a clean slate and, uh, a healthy relationship in 2024. So I'll be supporting this tonight. I ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gribb. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the best things about serving on Davenport City Council is that we very seldom actually have to play politics with things. But this, this one has really challenged us. And, um, on Saturday, I got to go to the grand opening of the Last Picture House. It's this wonderful boutique movie theater that just opened up in downtown Davenport on Second Street. So I'm going to speak in analogies with movies a little bit. Memphis Belle is a great movie. Uh, it's B-52 or something, is war plane, is, has a, has a, uh, completely charmed campaign. They, they don't have a single scratch on them. And then in their, in their last, uh, mission, they, they take all kinds of damage and, and, um, my point is this, you can't be surprised that we're limping into the runway when we've been subjected to so much artillery, uh, this entire debate. We're going to land this plane, but we're cranking the landing gear down at the last second. Um, so if, if, if the particulars of, um, some of the bids are surprising and, and it feels like we don't have time to discuss it, um, that might, that might be the product of, uh, how much extra scrutiny, um, this, this issue was put up to. Another movie is, uh, Monty Python. And in that movie, the artillery is actually like livestock. They're launching cows and stuff over the castle wall. And so, um, that's the other challenging thing about this debate is at times it's, it's gotten a little sideways and it's gotten a little silly. I've been guilty myself of, um, losing my way. But i- it just, I'm trying to highlight how uniquely divisive this issue has been because of the nature of the way we sometimes become illogical once we're drivers and, and just how challenging of an issue it is, as it is. So yeah, it's no surprise that we're limping into, uh, into the finish line here. But the guys that opened up that movie theater, um, there's some local guys. They went to Pleasant Valley High School, I believe, and, and they wrote a movie script and they made it big. And, um, they cared enough about their town and they believed enough in their town that they chose to reinvest in it in a really big way. And nobody told them where to put that movie theater, but where they chose to put it was in downtown Davenport. Because Davenport owns the currency of cool. It's, it's the one thing that these other communities can't compete with. Um, they chose to invest here on a two-way, for what it's worth. Again, this is my last meeting. I, I was being a little bit reminiscent and one of the most touching things happened when I, when I announced my candidacy is my brother wrote a letter to the editor and he highlighted the time that I drove him out to San Diego. He moved out to San Diego and I drove him across the country to move there. And, uh, apparently, um, I'm, I'm offered him, uh, that, you know, San Diego is pretty cool. I see these sandy beaches, but I think Davenport's where I want to be because, um, I can see what they're doing and, and Davenport has my heart. And so if the question is, um, is there a reason to do this and does this stuff work? There's two, uh, instances where it worked in a big way. Guys made it big all the way out in Hollywood and when they came back and they had a chance to invest in something else, they chose downtown Davenport. A dope like me drives my brother out to, uh, San Diego where, um, there's nothing but sandy beaches and pretty girls. And I say, ah, you know what? I think Davenport's right for me. And I had five kids and I'm raising my family in downtown Davenport. So there's two anecdotes for you that, yeah, this, this stuff really does work. And as I highlighted earlier, um, I've got some kids, Benjamin's eight, time flies, like we said, and, and in ten years, he's going to be eighteen. And, um, the question is, will he want to stay? Interestingly, my brother didn't stay in California. He came back, but we lost out to Des Moines. So we're not just competing with, uh, California, we're, we're competing with every city in America to keep, keep us relevant and, and keep us competitive. And the fact of the matter is, these types of investments in authentic community and sense of places, we're literally trying to build a great place for people, pedestrians. It, it really does work. And, um, you know, in, in ten years, when, when he's eighteen, in twenty years, when, uh, we have a thriving, uh, downtown on, on all block faces, um, I don't think we'll ever look back at this debate and would say, boy, I sure am glad that we, uh, scrutinized that last final thing, uh, because again, in the context of this city budget and the, and the things that, um, are, are going out to bid, um, this is a, a, in that context, this is a small number for a tremendous impact that will be felt for generations. And thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman Lynch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, last week, obviously I shared that I wasn't ready to decide on this. Um, and I think that would be pretty fair considering, I think this is my third or fourth meeting now. And so I, I still have a couple of questions and then I have a few statements I'd like to make. So kind of going back to, uh, what Alderman Jobchin mentioned and, uh, Alderman Gribb about the, uh, the bid differences. So if we, if we rebid, would the same two contractors be able to bid again?
Yes, they're able to rebid.
Okay. And, um, did we not have the option to ask any other contractors to bid this work?
Uh, Meyer Seating, this was a sealed bid. So in that case, you put out the line items, um, it's open to the entire community. I believe usually it gets sent out to anyone that we have in our, uh, vendor registry. Um, but we can't actually go out and solicit vendors individually.
And how long would this project take approximately? If we could guess? Does anyone know?
Brian Shad, City Engineer. Uh, this will have a long lead time on equipment and poles. That's about a six to nine month, uh, before that gets in. Uh, contractors can get started with underground work, but all told, it'll probably be about a year long.
Okay, thank you. So I guess with that being said, um, I own a heating and plumbing business and so we're contractors as well. And in my experience, um, when you get two bids back that are exponentially different like this, I, I didn't get a chance to review the two bids, the line items are substantial and I couldn't really understand why. And really nobody else could explain why either. Um, so from a contractor's standpoint, my, my thought process goes to, um, either A, one contractor knows something the other one doesn't, or B, um, perhaps the other contractor's so busy, they don't want to do it. So in my experience, working with other contractors and, um, having property where, you know, I get quotes from general contractors, I've seen where you get these bids back and one is ridiculously much higher, uh, because they just don't want the work, but they also want to save face, um, save face and, and offer a bid. So those are the only two things I could conclude, um, might be, might be why. Um, so I really, uh, was very nervous about this vote because I've, it's obviously very controversial and, uh, I've lost sleep on this and, uh, wanting to make sure I'm making the right decision, um, especially being so new. But I will say that I, I'm a consumer of downtown. I have been my entire life. I know some of the small business owners down there, um, and me being a small business owner myself, I always look at things first and foremost from a small business standpoint and as a consumer, because we need each other to survive essentially. I, I really honestly, whenever I make my, my decisions, especially the very, very hard ones, I have to ask myself, is the reward greater than the risk? And I think I have been able to finally come to the conclusion, in this particular situation, I do think it is. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Anyone else? Very good. If there's no one else, I'll just make a comment. This isn't about the one ways we made that decision. Yes, it was controversial and yes, we talked about it for years, but the decision was made and we, we stand by that decision. This is to, um, add to the infrastructure improvements that have been needed for a long time, the conduits and the signaling. Um, we're doing that no matter what. So let's move forward. Let's put this, we agreed to the conversion. Uh, yes, people were against it. Yes, people were for it, but we did agree to do it. Um, now we need to continue that momentum, continue that forward and get this done. So I encourage my colleagues to vote yes. Seeing no one else, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution.
Lee?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Gribb?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Seven yeses and three noes, Your Honor.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. Number three, motion approving a waiver of sidewalk installation for Birdie's Nest Daycare at twenty-six, twenty-seven Hickory Grove Road and that said waiver is valid as long as certain conditions remain in effect. Staff recommends denial. Is there any public with comment? Please.
Hello, um, my name is Nureya Salzbriner. I am the owner of Birdie's Nest Childcare Center. We are located at twenty-six, twenty-seven Hickory Grove Road. We are in the second ward. I know tonight is the night that you will vote on approving or denying our sidewalk waiver. I wanted to first say thank you. Thank you for being so kind to us over the past several weeks. Thank you for taking the time to come out to my center and see our space. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for listening to my daycare families and my staff about their concerns and their fears. I truly appreciate the fact that many of you came to my center and asked for a tour. That really meant a lot to me. Thank you for seeing this space and getting a better understanding of the rationale behind us not wanting these sidewalks. I know that being an elected official in this city is definitely not an easy task. It is met with many challenges. It is tough to balance the rules set before you with the faces of the city of Davenport, the citizens here who care very much about this community and the business owners who choose to make Davenport their home. I know I have spoken at length with all of our reasons why we would like this waiver approved. I will not rehash all of that with you tonight. I will welcome any additional questions you would like to ask me or any concerns that you may have for me. But again, I am asking for your vote to please be a yes to approve this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the pub? Please.
Diane Saman, eighth ward. Our children are the most prized possessions that we have. And anybody who disagrees with that has got something wrong with them. The things that they stated that they have had happen with the security around the building of people just being able to walk up, just dumbfounds me that we would want to put a sidewalk to bring people closer to our children. Children are irreplaceable. We cannot take a chance on some person going off half crazy, coming up to this building because there's a sidewalk and they're allowed to be there. It's, it's just stupid. Why do they have to keep coming here and asking for help? Why would we even want to put our children in harm's way? This is one of the hardest professions that there is. We are in high demand, but we have low pay. We don't have people understanding what we go through because many people do not think of it as a real job because we don't have nine to five hours, 401K, vacation insurance, whatever. But you cannot replace children. And these people bring their children to this place with the hopes that they are being protected and being cared for. So I'm asking you to not put any more stress on them other than what they already have going on to keep their children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Katie Stewart, Davenport. Now, this is definitely, um, something that I will back because this is human beings more than a road, but, um, especially our children. Um, I have been, used to work in the school system from little on the way up, um, in daycares, Hitta daycares, um, a lot of things and that our children is what matters. Um, it, I, I'm appalled by the fact that there's people urinating on, around, um, taking pictures, um, and so forth and so on. And that would just, um, make more of a access to be able to do more of that, um, for our children and that's not okay. These, um, anything that happens to our children affects them, um, down the road. Um, I, I, I'm living, um, proof of that with different things. So they see something that, uh, you know, a gentleman, you know, urinating or whatever, they could see something that they shouldn't be seeing, um, at that young age. And that can be traumatizing. So I, I think they need the waiver. I don't, um, think that they should have to pay for any, um, type of thing they're already dealing with a lot, um, with their renifications and stuff and, um, so.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's LaShawna Dixon, fifth ward. Um, I did, um, being my nosy self, I was able to, uh, drive past this facility. It's a beautiful center. It's a beautiful daycare center and I, if I had children, I would love for them to go there. And they have a waiting list of five hundred and I can see why. I just want to come up and list the facts. I drove up and down the block. It's a sidewalk leading to nowhere. It's leading to nowhere. And again, there's a sidewalk across the street. We have to be very careful with the children. They are being exposed to things they should not. And the sidewalk is going to be, make it a lot worse. And I could, I was probably, and I'm just going to say this, this, we're talking about children. When I was a child, growing up in Rock Island, Illinois, and I remember there was a guy walking down a sidewalk completely naked. And I'm going to tell you, I was probably about seven, eight. And I remember that to this day. This does, this is just traumatic. So we have to be very careful when we're dealing with children. And I'm just asking you guys, just, just, just don't. And it's, the, the daycare is, is, is really big. They need that space, but now you're willing to take away from the children's need for a sidewalk that is leading to nowhere. So. Grant Wayne.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Will Alderman move their motion? Motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a question that might lead to an amendment here and I apologize to, uh, staff. I had, I had asked this, um, and if there was a reply to my email and I missed it, again, I apologize. So my question is this, if the waiver is approved, does that mean they don't have to install any sidewalks along Pine, Columbia or Hickory Grove Road? Okay. There was just a little question there, so I just wanted to make sure. And if, if that wasn't the case, if I was misreading things, I was going to entertain an amendment, but, um, I won't do that since not necessary. Um, where I stand, uh, again, like I mentioned last week, I, I have no intention of being punitive to this business. I don't think, uh, ordering in sidewalks here adds anything to the walkability of the area nor enhances the neighborhood. So, um, where I, where I stand is I'm in favor of, uh, approving the waiver so that they don't have to install any sidewalks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Anyone else? Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I made my comments last week that, you know, typically I'm in favor of walkability and installing sidewalks. And again, I will, uh, reject the notion that somehow sidewalks encourage, uh, indecent behavior, which is just patently not true. Um, and they are a benefit to, uh, the community and we should encourage sidewalks. Uh, in this particular case, I don't think ordering in sidewalks, um, will add to the existing, um, system out there. And in order to do, in order to order them in, I think we would need to have a more comprehensive plan of what pedestrian, what the pedestrian system out on Hickory Grove looks like. So, um, ideally, you know, I would say the, the best case here is to put sidewalks on, on Pine Street. But having talked with- But having talked with Alderman Jobchin, I'm in an agreement at this point to go ahead and grant the waiver with the understanding that, you know, the city reserves the right in the future to order the sidewalks in, and we could have this discussion again, right? And secondly, I also want to reiterate with the staff, I still fully support building out our sidewalk infrastructure and making Davenport more walkable, and I appreciate you bringing these to us, and please continue to bring them to us, and then the city council can look at them as they, as they come and then make the difficult decisions whether to order them in or not. So I will, I will support granting the waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to say once again to you, young lady, I love how y'all come through because I, it's interesting how we can sit up here and we talk about all these different neighborhoods, but your people came out in droves. So you already know where I'm going. Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, I want to thank everybody who has come out in support of this. You have been, you have been diligent, you have been faithful to this, and eloquent as well. Thank you for the work you're doing. I, again, also understand that, that why staff, you know, staff's job is to look at what our ordinances are and say, here's the situation, and so they were doing their job, but, and I appreciate that as well. But I want to thank you, and I will certainly be supporting this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Hearing none. I'll just add a comment. Everybody knows we need quality childcare, so we should do everything we can to support people that are providing quality childcare. That's my opinion. Thank you. Brian, please call the roll. A yes is to approve the waiver.
Lynch?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ann Lee?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That motion is approved. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion in a second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Ann McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. Consent approved. Next area is other ordinances, resolutions, or motions. There are none for tonight, so we move to the next area. Is there any public of business? Remember our rules, you have five minutes. And we'll pause just a second. Looks like a lot of people are leaving, so I'll just give it a second for everyone to leave, and then we'll go to public of business. Please, whoever's first.
My name is David Ezra Sidran. I'm resident of the third ward. This item was added at the last minute to the agenda. I'm going to read it. Following the closed section, the city council may reconvene in open session to consider the ratification of settlement agreements with Cory Spiegel, Tiffany Thorn Dyke, and Samantha Torres. This is the perfect ending to the worst year in the history of the city of Davenport. We had a devastating flood this year because Ms. 1.6 million decided to fire the one person, an expert formerly with the Corps of Engineers, who knew how to use Hesco barriers. Ms. 1.6 million, in a letter to the public, said, and I quote, "Davenport's flood plan is not and never was intended to protect businesses." That went over great with the downtown businesses that were flooded. Then in May, 324 Main Street collapsed, killing three and terribly maiming a fourth. From emails that I've read right at this podium, it is obvious that Ms. 1.6 million was planning on demolishing the rest of the building while there were still people alive inside. It was Ms. 1.6 million dollars pettiness, vindictiveness, and just plain incompetence that led to the tens of millions of dollars in lawsuits against the city.
Mr. Ezra, stop your, stop your personal attacks. Who am I attacking? I'm not calling you on 1.6. I'm calling you with the words you're using. So stop the words against someone. We know who you're talking about.
And last week, I stood right here and told you how everything that the former city attorney had done in reference to Ms. 1.6 million and the two secretaries was unethical, illegal, and would turn around and bite you. And now your outside counsel has confirmed everything that I said and wants you, the city council, to ex post facto, that means after the fact, somehow make what is illegal legal. And you're going to do this in the dead of night. You're going to do this while the rats loot the treasury and run away, and you're going to say after the fact, no problem, take all the money you want, and here's full retirement and benefits too.
Take a seat, Mr. Ezra. Take a seat. You're not going to say rats. Go.
What are you talking about, sir? I have the right to speak. I have a first amendment right.
Don't use, don't use words like that again.
What words? I'm going to suggest something else. I'm going to suggest the city council do the right thing for once. Do not ratify the settlement agreement for Ms. 1.6 million and the two secretaries. Nobody believes that they were sexually harassed. Let them sue. The city is already being sued for enough to put the city in receivership. You can't do any worse than you've already done. For once this year, I'm begging the city council to do the right thing, to stand strong, to tell Ms. 1.6 million to take a hike, tell her the city of Davenport is done with her. Lane and Waterman are not working in the best interest of the city. They are working for the best interests of Lane and Waterman. Don't believe me? Ask the Archdiocese of Davenport. Look at every lawsuit they have lost for the city. What has the city got for the hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Okay, Mr. Sidran, you're done. Please sit. Thank you. Sit down. Thank you, Al. Sit down.
On what grounds, sir? On what grounds?
Thank you.
No, you have to give me a reason.
I'm telling you, you're out of line.
How am I out of line?
You're making personal attacks, a bunch of different people.
I'm not making any personal attacks.
I make a motion. I make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
There's a motion in a second.
To adjourn?
To adjourn to executive session. Brian, please call the roll.
Run, rats, run!
To adjourn to executive.
That's unfair. That's totally unfair.
Stop. Police, call the roll for adjournment to executive session. We might return back here. And I'll read, I'll read before we do it, Brian. Okay?
McGinnis?
Following the closed session, city council may reconvene in open session to consider the ratification of settlement agreements with Cory Spiegel, Tiffany Thorn Dyke, and Samantha Torres. Motion in a second has been called. Brian, call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lynch?
She's in the bathroom.
Okay. Oh, go on. Carry on. Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee? Ann Jobchin?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to executive session. We might come back. Please hurry.
Council, please move to executive session.
Alderwoman Dickman, you don't happen to still be on the line, do you?
Okay, that's it, right? Everybody's back? Okay, I'll accept a motion to reconvene in open session. Okay, all in favor of going into open session, back to open session?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'll accept a motion to ratify the settlement agreements with Corey Spiegel, Tiffany Thorndike, and Samantha Thors. Motion second, any discussion from alderfolks? Hearing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Kelly?
Nope.
Jopchin? And Gripp?
Yes.
Sorry, it looks like six yeses and one no, you're on.
Very good, the ratification is approved. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, have a good holiday.